This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
I am Vice President Salem Derby. I'm going to be talking this evening. Our esteemed president has some vocal issues, so welcome. Good evening and welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 20th. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage, easthamptonmedia.org. Councilors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the order extended until March 2025, which allows us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remote remain muted until recognized by the president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. The meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Tony Denham, I'm here. Salem Derby, Omar Gomez, JP Kuzinski, Tom Peek, Rob Riley, Tamara Smith, JT Terrell, Owen Zerret.
Please stand up for the pleasure of the Leans.
Let's lead them to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do you want me to do this, or do you want to do it?
Start this and then you can go on. I would take a motion to approve the minutes from March 6.
A move.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minute of March 6. Any further discussion? Seeing none for those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
Okay, so this is now where we're going to start public speak time. The president has informed me that we're going to have public speak time for two minutes for each participant tonight. So if you could limit your remarks to two minutes, we would appreciate that. And if you would make sure that you address your remarks to the full council and not to the chambers, we would appreciate that as well.
A response?
And just realize that because of open meeting law, we are not going to respond to your comments. And those responses will come later during committee time or during public hearings when that has been established that we will be responding. So we're happy to take the first person for a public speak time. You have two minutes. Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mortehai Kamel. My address is 359 Main Street in East Hampton. I had the privilege of speaking here the other night. And having heard the things that were said from the other side of the ceasefire resolution, I felt I needed to come back and respond to the full committee. I'm Jewish. My parents were Holocaust survivors. I believe in Israel's right to exist, and I believe in the Palestinian right to self-determination in a state of their own.
Can you pause for a second? Oh, thank you. I was going to tell you that.
That's okay. It's just easier that way. Thank you. I'm board chair of a small NGO that provides medical services and medical programs to marginalized people in both Israel and Palestinian territories. We are currently funding a program for mental health support for children in Gaza. I was a past board member of the Jewish Federation of Western Massachusetts, and my experience in both Israel and Palestine is extensive with both volunteering and living. Two days ago, a rabbi from Northampton stood at this podium and argued against the ceasefire resolution, stating that it would increase antisemitism, and described her feelings of fear following bomb threats against her synagogue. Now, I've lived with antisemitism for most of my life, both personally and professionally, and I understand exactly what she's saying. But the bomb threats took place before Northampton ever decided to take up the ceasefire resolution. And I think that it's important to remember that ceasefire resolutions don't cause increases in antisemitism. A city councilman engaged in it. I'm sorry, what?
That's two minutes.
That's two minutes?
Yes.
Yep. Time flies when you're having fun.
Sorry. A city councillor engaged in a bout of what-aboutism, citing Sudan and Syria as wars where we might also want to get involved. But the response should be obvious because those children aren't being killed by an American ally.
Thank you. Two minutes. You already used your two minutes. Thank you.
Well, I started late.
No, we paused it.
I did pause it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Weinberger. I live at 359 Main Street in East Hampton. And I'm part of a group of East Hamptonites. We are Jewish, Muslim, Christian, and nonreligious, Zionist, non-Zionist, and anti-Zionist. We range from Gen Zs to aging boomers, and we span every precinct in this city. But the one thing we all have in common is we desperately want to see the killing of innocents end in Gaza. I also want to respond to a couple of things that were said on Monday. They claim that the people who spoke against the resolution claim that there are many countries in the world engaging in violent wars that threaten humanity, not just Israel. Israel's been the largest cumulative recipient of U.S. foreign aid since its funding. Most U.S. assistance comes in the form of weapons grants, and more than 80% of Israel's weapons imports came from the U.S. between 1950 and 2020. In other words, each of us is financing the bullets and bombs that are killing Palestinian children, making us accomplices to murder. Some claim that more time is needed to look at suggested changes to the resolution. We need to remember that this resolution was drafted by a representative group of East Hampton residents, many of whom have a lot of knowledge about the political situation in Israel, Gaza, and the West Bank. Does it make sense to drag this process on while each day hundreds of women and children die, and any day a bloodbath may break out in Rafa? Will we let the perfect be the enemy of the good enough? I would also like to say to those who think it's not the purview of city councils to become involved in foreign affairs, silence is its own action. We are asking our city council to join the chorus of cities and towns all over the U.S., including Greenfield, Amherst, and Northampton, imploring President Biden to leverage the power of U.S. foreign aid to Israel to influence the Israeli government to agree to a ceasefire. Last sentence, said by activist Norman Finkelstein, "When he learned from his parents, who were survivors, they emerged from the Holocaust saying, 'Never again.'" Never again means never again, not just for the Jews, but for anyone. Thank you.
Carolyn Cushing, 143 Main Street. Since the Rules Committee met 48 hours ago, this has happened. The official death toll in Gaza has risen by 197 human beings. Ninety of those were killed at Al Shifa Hospital, the last partially functioning hospital in the north, which is raided the day of the meeting. Also, World Food Program Chief Sidney McCain said that there is a very small window left to prevent an outright famine in Gaza. Finally, the head of the Emergency Committee in charge of aid distribution was killed in Gaza City. The ever-more catastrophic developments in Gaza is what has motivated a diverse group of community members to partner with councillors Gomez and Denham to create a resolution, a holistic one, calling for the ceasefire, provision of humanitarian aid, release of all hostages and detainees, and an end to unconditional U.S. aid to the Israeli government. Sarah spoke to how diverse group we were. And I'll also say that some are longtime activists in East Hampton who've been working on this, and others, it's their first time engaging with city politics. And some who plan to speak tonight, it'll be their first time addressing the city council. We have worked as a group to have a respectful and thoughtful process the other night, always. And we organized our speakers, told them to listen respectfully, be on time. And we didn't really have to tell them. This is what people plan to do anyway. Since so many of us have been deeply engaged with people, people that we know in our lives from impacted by the conflict, from some in our group have family members in Israel, to Palestinian friends or colleagues, or in my case, fellow poets. I am a poet. I'm the poet laureate of East Hampton. And poets have been speaking to me. And we see the delay as only leading to more death. So please move the resolution as quickly as possible. And as I said, I'm a poet, and I have here a poem.
You can leave it there, and then he will pass it to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Janie Thurber, 8 Cranberry Lane, East Hampton. I echo everything that's been said. But in addition, I would like to say that Canada, yesterday I believe it was, voted to send no more arms to Israel, that the Shifa Hospital in Gaza City has continued to be attacked. I know they're looking for Hamas, but there are innocent victims there as well. We need to really have in our brains that 32,000 people have been killed. A week ago, it was 30,000, around that. That 74,000 have been wounded in Gaza, and that according to UN statistics, this conflict has created more victims of starvation than any conflict, past or present. Now, you can quibble with those because the UN has their ways, or Sudan probably doesn't have as accurate, but whatever. That's a whole lot noble. As many victims of starvation as any conflict past or present. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Elliot Papadakis. I'm a resident of East Hampton. I live in Ward 3. I was here on Monday. And I'm one of your, as you can see, many constituents who are deeply disturbed that this city is not moving forward towards a ceasefire resolution. I am also Jewish. I'm Israeli-American, and the descendant of a Holocaust survivor. Hearing my family's stories growing up, I'd wonder how the global community could allow a genocide to be perpetrated. Unfortunately, the town I live in is complicit in the same today. While we all sit in this meeting where our town will not do the bare minimum of considering calling for a ceasefire, families are being bombed, shot, and starved to death, all funded by our tax dollars. Residents being forced to fund this violence that is against the Jewish tradition, and it won't even succeed at the Israeli government's goals. You can't bomb Hamas out of existence, and you can't bomb your way to bringing back the hostages. You certainly can't bomb your way into peace and safety, including the safety of the Jewish people. And it is this violence of the Israeli state and the purposeful conflation of it with the Jewish people as a moral cover that poses the greatest threat to the worldwide Jewish community. If this town's response to concerns of antisemitism is to double down on the dehumanization and genocide of Palestinians, and to disregard the pain and demands of your constituents, our neighbors who are Palestinian, Muslim, and Arab, you are not doing your jobs. Our safety comes from fighting for each other. It is all of our responsibility to do so and pass this resolution. No one's safety comes from indiscriminate bombing. Palestinian people are facing genocide right now. We have to center them. We have to do this right now. We have to move this resolution forward and pass it. Thank you. Please do your jobs.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ruth Jensen, 28 East Maple Street. So I wear a lot of hats, but tonight I speak as a longtime East Hampton resident and a proud member of the Massachusetts Teachers Association, the largest union in state which passed a ceasefire resolution. As others have noted, a resolution calling for the immediate and permanent ceasefire in the war in Gaza is currently in limbo in the Rules Committee. I'm here to ask that the council, the Rules Committee move the resolution as written by East Hampton community members to be voted on by the full council. The authors of this resolution, myself included, are East Hampton residents diverse in our political beliefs and identities. We are part of a national and global call for ceasefire across the country. Millions of people are engaging in demonstrations, signing petitions, working tirelessly at every level of civil society, labor, governmental, and grassroots municipal communities to stop the war funded by our tax dollars. Our demands for ceasefire and lifting the siege on Gaza have broader support than ever. At the Rules Committee, some members of the council told us to address our concerns to higher levels of government and stated that senators Warren and Markey support a ceasefire, so our work here is redundant. I understand the confusion of the councillors, but in actual point of fact, the senators have yet to join with the majority of Americans and sign on to existing legislation calling for a ceasefire. Again, many share our councillors' confusion, as our senators have tweeted and sent polite letters to President Biden, but they have failed to sign concrete, existing proposed legislation for ceasefire. At the Rules Committee, we were told we should direct our energies elsewhere. I believe part of the job of local government is to bring the voices of our local community to higher levels of governance. To reiterate, I respectfully ask for the Rules Committee to respect the democratic process and bring our resolution for immediate and permanent ceasefire to a full vote of the city council. The resolution should be considered unamended, respecting the collective, diverse East Hampton residents who authored it, and respecting the patient, considered, and deliberate process we have followed to bring it before the council. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Erin Sullivan. I live at 17 Mayor Street. I'd like to start by thanking councillors Denham and Gomez for putting the ceasefire resolution forward for us to work on as a community group. East Hampton City Council has long been willing to approve resolutions and ordinances that support issues bigger than the immediate day-to-day town business. Taking a stand and voicing our support for international issues is nothing that hasn't been done before in this town. We're a small city with a big heart and seemingly a bigger understanding of the importance of solidarity, of symbolic acts and morally clear positions, of working to hold our elected representatives accountable, and making our residents feel supported. Some recent examples of resolutions this group has passed include in 2022, a resolution to pass the Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African-Americans Act. Also in 2022, we passed a resolution in support of H3126, an act providing for gender non-binary designation on state documents and identifications. In 2021, the council passed a resolution declaring a climate emergency. In 2021, there was also a resolution in support of self-determination for Puerto Rico, a resolution in condemnation of the events of January 6, 2021, at the U.S. Capitol Building. And in 2020, there was a resolution to prevent nuclear war. Our ordinance committee has spoken up in support of safe and fair access to legally protected reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare services. We fought to designate ourselves as a sanctuary city. East Hampton is a member of Mayors for Peace, and we're currently flying the Tibetan flag outside. In a move even more akin to what we're asking for with the ceasefire resolution, East Hampton stood in solidarity with the people of Ukraine in 2022. That May, we collected donations, flew their flag at City Hall. And in December, the mayor issued a proclamation urging the U.S. government to take action and lead efforts for a Christmas Time ceasefire. I would ask that you act in ways that you have previously and consider the ceasefire resolution as it stands. Thank you.
Hi, Carolyn Zikowski, Ward 1. Owen Zerret, you're a trustee of a pro-Israel organization, many affiliates of which came here from out of town Monday, who only had loose social networks here, like we all have everywhere, taking roughly a third of speaking time. Whether or not this is allowed is not relevant to me. Lots of things that are allowed should be critiqued. Later, a complete silence from everyone in the front of the room who is supposed to be dealing with the meeting, when one of those people literally called me a bitch. Owen, one of them called me a bitch. And I know that you all know that because another audience member came up and noted it on the microphone. Another of these folks made a comment about the frightening nature of the kafé, the scarf, that showed a complete erasure of the scarf's hundreds of years-old relevance to indigenous, yes, Jewish, Christian, and Muslim culture and craft in the entire Middle East. They didn't even seem to know. This is equivalent to how racist and vile it would be to say something similar about a Jewish garment. That individuals would come to someone's home, call a stranger "me," a sexist slur, say racist and uninformed things, steamroll and tone police our speaking time, and then claim they're the ones bullied and afraid? No, you have to be kidding me. There's a term in psychology for this. It's called DARVO, deny, attack, and reverse the victim and offender. That is what most of the anti-ceasefire contingent did on Monday. I have browsed the mass conflict of interest laws. Owen, you're dancing very close to breaking them. This is in light of the fact that there's been at least one former council member who resigned in protest over you. We all know that, I think, up here. I don't know if you all know that in the audience. I encourage folks to listen to the local newspaper, The Shoestring's podcast, Tripping on the Shoestring, episode 20, which did an in-depth analysis of Owen Zerret's controversial behaviors, including the former member's damning public testimony about him. Pay attention, East Hampton, when people attempt to delay and obstruct conversations about what all serious experts are calling a genocide. There's almost always another motivation for that obstruction.
Thank you. I'm going to take a pause now because we have a public hearing. I don't know if anyone from the public show up just because of the public hearing that we scheduled at 6:15. I promise that after the public hearing, I'm going to open the public speak time once again. For those people who didn't speak yet, they're going to have another, they're going to have an opportunity to talk to the council. But right now, we have to open the public hearing. I would take a motion to open the public hearing.
A move. Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. Prez. Do you have the motion for this?
I do.
Or you do it?
You like read it, right?
I have it.
So this is something that we do once a quarter, but for anyone who's interested, we, the money that funds eMedia, East Hampton's local, public, educational government media company, comes to them from Charter, or yeah, or Spectrum, they're not Spectrum now, from Spectrum via us. Like, the money gets transferred to the city, and then we transfer it. So it has to happen every quarter. And that's just what this is again. So there's nothing terribly controversial. The one thing I did just want to note, though, councillor Denham did a good job of noting that the amount here is lower, and that that is a trend that we have observed for the last couple of years of it slowly but steadily falling. That makes sense as this revenue is collected from an assessment on cable TV bills, but not cable internet bills. So anyone like myself who streams stuff but doesn't actually have cable TV at this point is not participating in that. I just bring this up because it is gradually falling, and with a new high-speed internet provider likely to be entering this market soon, I think that the rates of cable, of cord-cutting could increase. And so I'm using my pulpit here to just say, we might have a structural problem in the long run that we might want to get in front of and figure out what we're going to do about before it becomes an existential crisis for our local media channel. And we're struggling in the moment to think of a solution. I think that that's what happens sometimes in local government too much, is we don't act when we have time to be smart about it, and then we end up having, like, to be kind of dumb about it, because that's what our options are. With that being said, I don't think anyone has any objections to this, so.
This public hearing, I have to do.
I'm, that's, so I'm ready whenever you.
Okay. Any councillors have any comments or questions? Councillor Derby?
So I appreciate Council Peak's kind of overview of that. And there is a proposal that I just wanted to mention that would put a tax on streaming services that would help offset the cord-cutters and keep East Hampton Media and local access channels like that alive. It's called an Act to Modernize Funding for Community Media Program via 5% tax on streaming services, like Netflix and Hulu and those types of things. And I would personally support that because I think that East Hampton Media provides a service to all of us, being able to see these meetings on television, being able to stream them, being able to watch them, I think is important. And I think it promotes democracy. So I would call for everybody to support that bill.
And I just want to add something really quick. Is that eMedia is going to provide us some letters of support. So that way, the council can support those bills in the beginning. And as soon I get it from Jeff, I will share that, put it on the agenda, and we can support it.
Fantastic.
You have something?
I was.
Mr. Kuzinski?
I was just wondering if you could get a copy of the act, because
Okay.
I'm sure there are many of us that would like to further write to people
I will get that, too.
to advocate for this position.
I will get that, too.
They provide a great service.
Yeah.
Anyone from the public want to participate in this particular issue? You have three minutes.
I don't need them.
Okay.
I am so glad to hear this on the agenda. I'm old enough to have gone back to be part of my community's struggle with cable, the cable companies when they first came in, and through the mighty battle that ended up getting us community stations. And I'm really appreciative, Tom and Salem, that our city's taking this up. The two issues. One is, how can we cut the cable cable and still get internet? And I pay more than I can afford, and the government has just shut off any, any support for that. And I don't even have cable television. How can we cut the cord but still be connected? And I'm so glad you're on it. I had hopes for a minute that we were going to have our own, our own connections, but I hope this is a good alternative. And I really, really thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Was that three minutes?
Yes.
One.
Mary, do you want to keep going?
My name's Mary Ann, Sarah.
Hold on. My name is Nathan Markey. I live at 37 Holyoke Street here in East Hampton. I am actually on the Board of Directors in East Hampton. I believe I'm the only person on the Board of Directors here. And I came unexpectedly today because there's actually three issues that I care about tonight, but I'm just going to speak about the East Hampton Media for right now. And I'm very, very glad to see the city council taking these steps because it's been a topic of discussion fairly often. I mean, we're in good shape now, but down the road, it looks like, like councillor Peak said, things will be falling off. But thank you very, very much. I just.
Thank you. Anyone else in this topic? Anyone remote that want to participate in this topic? Kat, are you waiting for the public speak time, right? Okay, I guess not. Before I take the motion, I just want to remind councillors, just wait until the city council president recognizes you to talk. That way, we can have a better, smooth meeting. We will appreciate that. Thank you. Councillor Peak.
All right. I'll make this following request in the form of a motion. A request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation amount requested, $49,588.09 to be transferred from PEG Access account, $49,588.09 to be transferred to PEG Access account, $49,588.09. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to give approval to spend from the PEG Access Reserved Account for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreement.
Second. I have a motion and a second for the interdepartmental transfer of $49,588.09 to the PEG Access account for cable-related purposes. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
A move. Second.
I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Now, we'll continue the public speak time. For those ones that didn't speak to the council yet, you will have For those ones that didn't speak to the council yet, you will have two minutes to address any concerns or comments to the council. And I know some people are participating remote. I'm allowing people in the room participating first, and then I'm going to let you participate in the remote. Anyone here? And again, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Council and I live on 20 Adams Street. Would you kill a child? Would you push rubble onto them and push it into their chest until they couldn't breathe? Would you let them lie there in their own excrement as they waited, hoping that someone might be able to pull them out? Would you take away a son from a father, a daughter from a mother, parents from a child? Some people act like the Israeli-Palestinian conflict is complicated, but at this point, it is not complicated. Israel is conducting a genocide, an ethnic cleansing of the Palestinian people, which they refer to as animals. Philosopher Peter Singer says that if someone is drowning and you don't want to get your shoes wet and you watch them drown, you are complicit in their death. As one of your constituents, I'm asking you to please pass this resolution for ceasefire. And if it comes up again, also, please stop giving Israel money for weapons and other horrible atrocities. And I think it's really quite simple. You don't even have to get your shoes wet. I will rescind the rest of my time.
Hi, my name's Danielle O'Bannon. I'm a local family doctor. I'm a resident of East Hampton in Precinct 3. I attended the Rules Committee meeting on Monday night where a diverse and large coalition of community members gathered to advocate for a ceasefire resolution. I was shocked at how weak the council appeared throughout the meeting. I watched political stall tactics dithering council members who clearly hadn't read the resolution, condescending grandstanding from council members. I, really, I was frustrated and offended, except for Connie Denham, whose frustration mirrored my own. Do better, City Council. I'm a local family doctor who has friends and colleagues working for Doctors Without Borders in Gaza, both still working there and who have returned. As a doctor, bearing witness to the horrific stories that my brethren have shared and watching videos of the dire straits in Gaza's completely destroyed health system, placing myself in their shoes as a doctor, I lie awake at night thinking of dead children, shell-shocked, drawn faces attached to bodies missing limbs and mutilated human beings. I also think of how much I have funded this mass murder. As a doctor, when I hear that there are people who can bear witness to the same suffering and oppose anything less than a permanent ceasefire, I know that there are truly hard-hearted people in the world, and some of those people are on this council and in this room. I have been unable to get my representative to listen to my individual calls, so I must ask my City Council to represent me and the large, very large group of my fellow community members from many different backgrounds who came together to hammer out this resolution to demand that we call for a ceasefire. Thank you so much.
My name is Pam Fontesme. I live on West Street. Please pardon me if I stumble over my words. I have a migraine and I should be at home in bed. I'm here instead because this is important to me. I support the ceasefire resolution as written. Sorry, I'm also nervous. I take seriously my duty to do everything in my power to stop our government using our tax dollars to assist in the unfathomable violence of ethnic cleansing and genocide. It is disappointing to me that the Rules Committee decide, declined to bring our resolution before the full council this week when this is a matter of such great urgency. Every day that the United States continues to back this Israeli military operation, more civilians are murdered. More homes, farms, schools, libraries, hospitals, cemeteries, and places of worship and sanctuary are destroyed. We, as individuals, have called our representatives in the federal government. We have marched in the streets and we have stood outside their places of work. They are not listening to us. Our voices, together as a community, are stronger than our individual calls. This is why we need to pass a local ceasefire resolution so that we can send a message to the federal government that we do not consent to our tax dollars being used for this type of violence, and we do not consent to our representatives claiming to do this in our name. Stopping a genocide by ceasefire should not be a controversial position. I urge everyone here to proceed with the ceasefire resolution as quickly as possible. I urge the members of the Rules Committee to move it forward as quickly as possible. And I thank Consulors Denham and Gomez for working with the community on this resolution. Thank you.
Good evening, Monashadi. I live in Ward 1. At the last meeting, I said that I implored the council to put forth and pass Counselors Gomez and Denham's ceasefire resolution. Tonight, I will use the word "beseech." I beseech this council to stand with the constituents they represent, the nearly 100 cities and growing who have also passed resolutions, the millions in the streets, and the brave nations who have used every diplomatic and legal capacity at their disposal to stop this genocide. I beseech the council to stand with sheer humanity. As we are here tonight, over nearly 14,000 Palestinian children have been killed by ISU. To put that in perspective, that is more than all of the children, all, who attend school in East Hampton, Northampton, West Springfield, and Holyoke. Imagine every infant, toddler, child, and teenager gone, and gone in the most horrific ways. Over 17,000 children in Gaza are unaccompanied, which is a polite way of saying they are separated from their families, their relatives cannot be located, or have all been killed. 17,000 unaccompanied children is the equivalent of every child in pre-K to senior year in East Hampton, Northampton, Greenfield, West Springfield, Holyoke, South Hadley, and Hadley School Districts, being without a parent or guardian in the midst of a genocide. That means there are over 28,000 Gazan children who are alone, injured, dead, or dying as I speak. That's 2/3 of the 46,169 children who attend school in the city of Boston. We know that no one here can stop this genocide by snapping their fingers, and that's why passing this resolution is essential. It means hope. It sends a message to other communities who want to stand up as well. It sends a message to our state and federal leaders. It unites us in our shared humanity, compassion, and care. A ceasefire resolution is symbolic, and it is exactly when things are at their most bleak and most dark that the symbolic can be the most important and essential. Please put forth and pass this ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Hi there, my name's Maui Freeman. I'm an East Hampton resident on Davis Street in Precinct 3. I support the ceasefire resolution as written. In this moment of such immense devastation, violence, and destruction occurring in Gaza, I believe it is our moral duty to add our voices to the widespread call for a ceasefire. Our local government is our opportunity to be heard and seen by our larger government. And as many of our Massachusetts representatives have not called for a permanent ceasefire by signing the legislation by Cori Bush, a local ceasefire resolution would be a message and a signal that more is needed to push for a permanent ceasefire at the federal level. I'm a mental health therapist locally. The depth of trauma Palestinians have suffered, are currently suffering, and will be haunted by for generations, is unfathomable. So many children in Gaza are suffering incomprehensibly. So many innocent civilians are being killed. Around $130 million of Massachusetts taxpayers' money is sent in military aid to Israel annually, funding this current and ongoing violence and genocide. I implore the City Council members to support the ceasefire resolution being moved on from the Rules Committee so that it can be one step closer to being considered and passed. I also want to express my deep appreciation for the work of Counselor Denham in supporting this community-written and driven resolution. Thanks.
My name is Deb Friedman. I'm Chapman Ave, Precinct 2, and I am Jewish. With regard to the proposed East Hampton ceasefire resolution, I ask that City Council vote on the resolution as soon as logistically possible before another two weeks go by. I was extremely saddened by the October 7th attack on Israel, and I believe the actions of the Hamas military were crimes against humanity, but I can't do anything to change what happened that day. However, I can and will do anything I possibly can to stop the deaths of more innocent individuals of any nationality or religion. People are still dying. Almost my, one of my first nearly unconscious reactions to the Israeli government's response after October 7th was that Israel's actions will make me and Jews all over the world less safe, and it's still my belief. My question is this: how do you know that antisemitism is increasing because of criticism of Israel rather than because of the Israeli government's vastly disproportionate, ongoing, indiscriminate response to being attacked? I wonder what would happen to the rising antisemitism here if all American Jews understood that what Israeli is doing to the Palestinians, both in Gaza and the West Bank, will never make Israelis permanently safe and secure, and said, "No, Israel does not speak for me, and no, I don't support the extreme, ongoing, collective punishment of Gazans carried out by the Israeli government. I don't have an answer to this, but I believe it is Israel's policy and the views of those supporting it that is increasing antisemitism." Every day, more Israelis and more American Jews, including many rabbis, are calling for a ceasefire. Even Chuck Schumer has moved slightly away from his initial position. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Zeimer. I live in East Hampton on 25 East Maple Street, Ward 2. I am here to amplify the voices and perspectives of the prior speakers and urge you to consider the proposed ceasefire resolution as written and proposed by the residents. To be clear, I support peace and liberation for Israelis and Palestinians in their ancestral lands. The actions that the Israeli government is taking in response to the horrifying attacks by Hamas add catastrophe to catastrophe. You've heard many people speak of the death, destruction, and devastation that Palestinians are experiencing. This is a profound moral catastrophe, and the United States is complicit. Our government is providing massive military aid to Israel, enabling and adding to the death and destruction. I individually have called multiple times all of the elected officials for the state of Massachusetts. I've also called the White House multiple times and sat on hold to express my opinion. But individuals are stronger when they add their voices together, as we're noting here tonight. Municipalities, local governments are stronger when they add their voices together. The actions of the city of East Hampton, joined with other municipalities, might sway the state, the state might sway the government, the national government. We have more influence together than we do alone, and we cannot tolerate this death and destruction in our name. Please bring this resolution forward and support it. And let us acknowledge that the growing antisemitism, which I do believe is sweeping across the globe, along with growing Islamophobia and anti-Arabism, is a direct consequence of the catastrophe that is unfolding. But supporting a ceasefire resolution is not a binary choice with opposing antisemitism, anti-Arabism, and Islamophobia. We can oppose all of them at the same time. We should and we must.
Good evening. My name is Inez O'Neill. I'm a resident in Prison 4. I say yes to passing this ceasefire resolution. Our city of East Hampton needs to join our neighboring cities to send a message, to send a message to our present government that we do not agree with our continuing assistance using our tax dollars and sending even more arms to the government of Israel. They're killing so many Inns and Palestinians. Stop delaying from passing this resolution. It's the right decision. As our local representatives, you must listen to our voices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shalom. My name is Rachel Rosencarroll. I live on Pleasant Street in East Hampton. And I am a local children's author, and as such, I am horrified at how this violence is targeting children in particular. They are paying the price for this senseless destruction. So I'd like to read a poem tonight that I gave to Richard Neal's office as part of a packet. And it is called "The Swimming Pool" because in Israel, the very wealthy Israelis in the West Bank have swimming pools. Meanwhile, the Palestinians do not have access to clean water. "The West Bank developer already drew the blueprints. You will build along Gaza's shore. You will dig a trench, deep as the deepest sea, where no light can penetrate the chlorine. You will pour cement into the hospital ruins, the shelled maternity ward, where cribs wept pillow-filling like thistle down. You will pour cement over the children. The developer is already posting on Instagram, 'A home on the beach, it is no dream,' bastardizing Herzl. If you will it, it is no dream. This was not the will, this was not the dream, of my ancestors who built on their trauma, now drunk and senseless. Did we dream, as the Warsaw ghetto was liquidated, of a swimming pool in the desert overflowing
Good evening, my name is Kathy Wazinski. I live at 22 Overlook Drive. I actually want to talk about city business. As tragic as all of the wars are that are occurring, a resolution here would not solve those issues. We have an extraordinary number, extraordinary amount of building planned for our city. We have an aging water and sewer system that does not, is not able to handle all of the building that is proposed. And we have a proposal that's going to look at defiling what is a historic landmark in our city. I would ask you to slow down any plan to modify the town farm and look at alternatives that many city residents are proposing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Jennings. I live on 7 Grant Street. I work at Gon Keshit Preschool, Jewish preschool. I work at Camp Kinderland, a secular Jewish summer camp. And I have two children. And it is really hard getting a child to put on their snow pants. I can tell you, it's really hard when a kid is freaking out because when their mom drops them off at the very nice nurturing preschool. It's very hard working with children. I love children, and I, I can't imagine, I can't imagine watching any of the footage, watching children being murdered, watching children lying in hospitals that are ill-equipped, that don't have any of the proper medical equipment, while the US funds the weapons that are being used to. that are being used to kill and make these children's lives miserable. It seems a small thing to be able to pass this resolution that people have already worked hard to write, and I hope you do the right thing.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nathan Markey. I live at 37 Holyoke Street, and I really don't have a lot to add to what people have said before. I wasn't really even planning on attending this meeting. I'm glad I did. A lot of the words of people that support the ceasefire resolution had an impact on me, and I feel that a lot of them were very, very heartfelt, and I'm definitely in support of the ceasefire resolution. I hope that everybody in the Rules Committee can come to terms and figure out the best way to move forward, because I think it's very important to our town that we have a stance on this and not stay silent. I know this is slightly unrelated, but I know there's also a paint thing, a paint stewardship. I'm also in support of that, so if my voice isn't heard at the next meeting or whatever, just make note that I'm, I'm a house painter by living, so I buy a lot of paint, and I don't think that a recycling fee on top of paint would be a bad idea. But yes, ceasefire resolution. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Margot DeCostard. I live on Lincoln Street in Ward 2. I want to thank Connie Denham and Omar Gomez for bringing this ceasefire resolution to the table. I support the ceasefire resolution. I just wanted to add a few more stats that hadn't been said yet. Seventy percent of the population of Gaza is facing catastrophic levels of starvation and hunger right now. Around 2 million people in Gaza do not have enough food to eat. Half of the population on the brink of starvation, and famine is projected to arrive in the north anytime between mid-March and May 2024. This is according to the Integrated Food Security Phase Classification. Also, over 30,000 innocent people have been killed by Israel in Gaza, and the far-right government of Israel has made it clear in their own words, time and time again, that this is not just a war against Hamas, it is a war against the people of Gaza. Quoting the Associated Press, Deputy Knesset Leader Nassim Vaturi from the ruling Likud Party wrote on X, or Twitter, formerly known as Twitter, that Israelis have one common goal, which is erasing the Gaza Strip from the face of the earth. The Israeli Heritage Minister Ami Kai Eliyahu from the far-right Jewish Power Party suggested that Israel drop a nuclear bomb on Gaza and said that there are no involved civilians in the territory. Netanyahu and other far-right Israeli ministers have said that Western civilization requires the total destruction of Palestinians in Gaza and has equated them to the biblical people of Amalek, a people perceived in the whole as an enemy that must be destroyed. Meanwhile, Israeli developers have put out plans and advertisements to build condos on the beach in Gaza once Gaza is destroyed and the war is over. So just think about that, and I encourage you to support a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christine Miranda. I live on East Green Street in East Hampton, and like many others, I just want to speak in support of the ceasefire resolution as written and encourage that it's brought to a full vote as soon as possible and passed. And like others who have spoken to why the city council should take up something like that, or what is the value of a symbolic local resolution, I just want to emphasize, again, like others have said, that as long as the U.S. is funding the violence against the Palestinian people, we all have a responsibility to leverage absolutely everything in our power against that. And so, yes, that includes local resolutions and city councils, and if, you know, every city and town and different local institution joins part of that tide, that does make a significant difference. And so, just like community members like myself will continue to pressure this council until it is too politically inconvenient for you to ignore it, the city of East Hampton, supporting a ceasefire resolution, is part of that broader movement of people saying that we don't agree with the genocide of the Palestinian people and eventually making it at the national level too politically inconvenient to ignore that movement anymore. So I strongly am in favor of the ceasefire resolution as written and hope that it's brought to a vote as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Asher Swank. I live in East Hampton, 20 Adams Street, and I just want to basically echo what the last speaker said, and that in order to make changes, symbolic rewards such as passing the ceasefire resolution as written always precedes material change. So if we want to see an end to the massacre of children, women, men, people living in Palestine, these are the steps you have to take. It may seem trivial, it may seem ineffective, but these are the kinds of things that add to the conversation and eventually make a change. So I urge you, pass the ceasefire resolution as written as soon as possible. The people of Gaza can't wait. There is famine in the north, there's an oncoming invasion planned in Rafa with only lax resistance from the United States government, and for us here to sit here and delay, delay, delay is just going to lead to more deaths. If there is any small fraction of life that can be saved by our action, I urge you to take it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brianna Jelley Weber. I'm an East Hampton resident. I live in Precinct 2, and like so many of my fellow residents, I would like to comment on the March 18th Rules Committee meeting. What struck me most at this meeting was that the vast majority of people who spoke, if not all of them, councillors included, whether they did or did not support this resolution as it is, said that they do want a cessation of the violence, and the only logical first step in that is a swift and lasting ceasefire. This ceasefire resolution shows that we as a community value human life and that we no longer want our tax dollars or the weapons made on our soil going to a foreign military that continually violates international humanitarian law with impunity. And this is certainly on a more selfish level, but I do also worry that if the U.S. continues to enable such crimes from an ally, what does that mean for us in the future? We want safety for all of our neighbors and friends, and that includes especially right now those who are Jewish, Muslim, Arab, Israeli, and Palestinian. And we also want that safety not just for our neighbors, but for those that we don't know, who may not look like us, who live far away, because that is truly what makes us all safer. And again, that lasting peace and safety can only start to be accomplished when there's a lasting ceasefire. I ask that you move this resolution forward as swiftly as possible to set an example where our federal and state governments have failed. Thank you.
My name is Anastasia Day. I live at 168 East Street here in East Hampton, and I just want to echo so much of what everyone has said and amplify this and say that we talk a lot about being proud that America's a democracy, but we all know that there are different ways that democracy is felt. There's voting through your dollars, which, against our will, many of us, or like without our act of consent at least, we are all actively funding Israel and its weapons. There's voting with who we elect to city council. There's voting with our voices, speaking up at city council, and I think that we're hearing a vast number of people who have taken the time and energy to say that this is not something that they are willing to even be passively complicit in, and I think that cannot be ignored. This resolution needs to pass. As someone earlier said, please do not let perfect be the enemy of the good enough. As written, please pass this resolution for ceasefire.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mara Dodge. I live in Precinct 4. As you've heard, I and many others were extremely disappointed at the Rules Committee meeting on Monday. There was 90 minutes of public comment, and of those who opposed the resolution, three out of the five were not from North Hampton, I'm sorry, not from East Hampton. I'm also Jewish. We could have brought rabbis from neighboring towns to speak in favor of the ceasefire resolution. There's been rabbis who spoke in Amherst and North Hampton in favor, but we were restricting our commentators to East Hampton residents, because this was an East Hampton petition put together, as you've heard many times now, by a very large group that worked five weeks to craft it, to come to a consensus. So we're asking that it be sent to the full city council as soon as possible, unamended. So I also did want to mention, I have written this to all of the city councillors, so I know you've heard it, but I'd like to just state it publicly. There was just very recently, on March 8th, a ceasefire statement released that was signed by 600 rabbis, that was put together for rabbis for ceasefire, and also TRUA, which is a rabbinic human rights group. So signed by 600, I sent you the link to that article. Our group includes Jews who proudly define themselves as Zionist and those who don't identify in that way. There was a broad range of opinion. Again, you've heard this over and over now. Some of the criticisms of the resolution was that there was a lot left out of it, and I actually agree, there were things left out of it. For example, we left out mention of our concern for the number of Palestinians killed in the West Bank. In 2023, the IDF, Israeli Defense Forces, killed 507 Palestinians, including 81 children in the West Bank, so we did not, we chose to leave that out. 2023 was the deadliest year for Palestinians in the West Bank. According to Amnesty International, another 61 were killed in January. So anyway, so we didn't try to put everything into the resolution. We put in what we thought was absolutely essential and factual-based and should not be controversial.
Thank you. Anyone else that didn't spoke yet?
Yes, hello. I didn't prepare anything, so give me a second. My name is Hong Fan. I live in 28 East Maple Street in East Hampton, Ward 2. I want to thank Councilors Denham and Gomez for bringing this forward, representing their constituents. I just want to emphasize to those councillors at the Rules Committee, basically posing to you, who do you represent? You don't represent those people that you brought from the outside in Long Meadow, North Hampton, Amherst. You represent, that's the premise of a representative democracy, you represent the will of the people, the taxpayers of East Hampton. This government, what is our relationship? It's not just symbolic. This is a direct, a direct funding of the genocide. Our tax dollars in East Hampton go directly to funding the genocide. $3.8 billion unconditional U.S. military aid, U.S. aid to Israel. Now $14 billion more adding to the killing. I just want to emphasize also that really, it was terrible, and we include in our resolution we mourn the loss of Israeli life, the attack on civilians. But what is going on right now? How many more Palestinians have to die? Over 300,000, think about that, 300,000, 70% of them, children, women, noncombatants, civilians, had nothing to do with that attack. The bombs are falling on them, starvation, no clean water. I just want to end with this, I know I don't have much time. April 4th, 1967, Martin Luther King Jr. gave his Beyond Vietnam speech. April 3rd will be the next meeting of the full city council. I hope that the resolution as written by a broad, diverse coalition of East Hampton residents, working together, will be held. We can revisit that speech, but it's on my mind, because just to wrap up, one of the things that the leaders of this genocide, the Defense Minister Yoav Galant, when he ordered that complete Gaza Strip, no electricity, no food, no fuel, everything is closed, he said, "We are fighting human animals, and we are acting accordingly." This is the dehumanization of Palestinian life going on right now.
Hello, my name's Ian Petty. I live at 7 Adams Street, Precinct 3. I didn't prepare much, so I'll be quick, and I think East Hampton residents have spoken very clearly and eloquently about the violence and horror in Gaza, and I hope it's clear to all of us that a ceasefire is desperately necessary and a clear solution. And so, my only question in this moment, given that it's clearly the will of the East Hampton people and clearly a solution to the violence that's going on in Gaza, is what political leadership looks like in this moment. It certainly doesn't look like any opposition to the ceasefire resolution, but it also doesn't look like simple passive acceptance of it when it comes up after all the procedural rules have been done. I think it looks like advocacy and doing everything in your power to make this resolution come as written to the council as quickly as possible and voting in support of it, working with your constituents who have worked so hard to bring it to you and making sure it passes, representing the will of your constituents and providing a real solution for the violence in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here, before I go to the people that are participating remote? A chance for the people who are here? No? Kat? And I'm going to apologize if I mispronounce your name, so, but I want to start with Kat.
That's okay, thank you. My name is Catherine Good Schiff. I live on Mount Tom Avenue in Precinct 3, and I have lived in East Hampton for 17 years, but this is my first city council meeting. I'm also here to speak in favor of East Hampton passing the resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. I was horrified, like many others, by what happened on October 7th to Israelis, and I've been horrified in the days that have followed by what has been happening to Palestinians in Gaza. I do not want my tax dollars sent in unconditional support of such excessive and disproportional violence. I strongly reject the idea that calling for a ceasefire is antisemitic. Just as when I protested the invasion of Iraq in 2003, that position was not anti-American, as some said, both positions were and are pro-peace and pro-humanity. In the words of Rabbi Elliot Kukla, who did civil disobedience at the United Nations in favor of a ceasefire, quote, "Mainstream appeal has never been a good litmus test for morality," unquote. And yet, we can see now that in East Hampton, I think this ceasefire resolution does have mainstream appeal. I care about my Jewish friends and my Muslim friends, and I want them to live in a world where they can be neighbors, not enemies pitted against each other by a colonialist, colonialist cycle of violence. No one has clean hands or is without blame in the current conflict, but the excessive violence and the high civilian death toll in Gaza enumerated by earlier speakers is beyond anything that should be remotely acceptable to us. For this reason, I believe that our city council, my city council, should pass this resolution as written, calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Hello, my name is Sebastian Barr. I'm a resident of East Hampton, 3rd precinct. I've lived here since 2021. I've been a homeowner since 2022. This is my first city council meeting. I'm not going to repeat the powerful points fellow residents have made. I'll keep this brief. I just wanted to say on public record that as a resident invested in East Hampton, the Rules Committee meeting on Monday was very alarming to me. What I witnessed left me without confidence in our council to govern effectively and to engage meaningfully with the will of its constituents. I have often felt proud to be a resident of East Hampton over the past three years. I felt proud tonight and Monday, listening to my neighbors who have spoken and demonstrated in support of the ceasefire resolution. I'm proud of the coalition effort that went into the creation of this thoughtfully and intentionally worded resolution. However, I was not proud of how Monday's meeting ended, nor the behavior of many of the city leaders in attendance. You have a chance to do something that we can be proud of, something that can make an impact in many ways. Please move this resolution through as written and pass it. There is no time for further delay. through as written and pass it. There is no time for further delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Close public hearing, look like no one else had the right. No one else? Communication for elected officials, board and committee. Counselor Denham?
Just wanted to let people know that on Monday, March 25th, myself, I believe President Gomez, as well as school committee member Megan Harvey are going to have office hours at the library. So if people have issues or anything like that, we'll be there at the library at 6:00 PM. So we encourage anyone who has any concerns to come down and let us know about that, whether it's city-related, school-related, et cetera. We'd love to see you.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Seeing none? Major's communication, Madam Mayor? Thank you. Mr. Vice President, communications?
I do not have any tonight.
Thank you. Report for Standing Committee, Finance, Mr. Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, we met last week to talk about the Peg Access thing. We already voted on that. The only thing currently on our agenda is the matter of the review of salaries for elected officials, and we're waiting on some data before we make any more conversations there. So we will not be meeting between now and our next meeting. Thus concludes.
Thank you. Police safety, Consul Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on the 12th, I think it was last Tuesday. We had the quarterly report from the Police Department. The primary takeaway from that, and the report was sent to all the councillors as well, notable is the regionalization of the dispatch center, we're regionalizing with Southampton. This is made possible with a close to $1 million grant, and I think my numbers are correct, but we're going to be, Southampton's going to pay us $175,000 a year over three years for dispatch. So that's going to definitely optimize the work that's being done there, as well as through regionalization, I think be helpful for the city of Southampton as well. The report's available, that should be public as well. Feel free to email myself or another councillor if you would like that from the public. We also went on to review the proposed no parking modification and parking fines. We're meeting one more time, April 9th, just to get full consensus from the committee, but I think we're generally in agreement about that. And the police chief and the deputy chief were there at our last meeting and had no issues with that. I'd like to set a public hearing for that item at this time for April 17th at 6:15 PM in these chambers, in the form of a motion.
That's for the one-way?
No, that's for the no parking and the fines.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing for April 17th at 6:15 in this chamber, and for the discussion, seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
Additionally, we met with the DPW Director, one of the engineers regarding the proposed one-way streets in New City at Everland Place in Clinton. Again, this is somewhat time-sensitive. Generally, we agreed that as this is more so falls on the expertise of the individuals that presented, that we didn't seem, we didn't have any issue with it. I did email other members of the committee who weren't able to be there, encouraged them to either reach out to the DPW Director, or I was certainly, I'm certainly happy to hold another meeting, but the communications I received back, they had no issues with the proposal. So that was approved 2-0 to recommend to the full council, with the understanding that other members weren't necessarily present. But again, there seems to be no concerns there. I'd like to set a public hearing for that item at this time, for the April 3rd meeting at 6:15.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing April 3rd at 6:15 in these chambers, and for the discussion, seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
We have one item that requires extension, that's the Ordnance Review Committee's final report. I'd like to request the form motion, 90-day extension on that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to extend for 90 days the Ordnance Review Committee final report, and for the discussion, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
As noted, our next meeting is April 9th at 6 o'clock, I'm assuming Room 1, Conference Room 1. We will have kind of the final wrap-up on the change of those no parking signs, as well as the parking fines, and we'll have a conversation about some of the Ordnance Review Committee items that desperately need to get wrapped up. Thus concludes.
Thank you, Consul Sarret. I will ask the public if, I will ask the public if you guys have to talk, I would prefer you to do it out of the chambers, because we have to continue in business. Thank you. Appointments, Consul Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointment Committee last met this Monday, March 18th, to discuss two city council appointees to the Licensing Board. Typically, when I do committee reports, I like to celebrate the charm and kindness of appointees, or tell small anecdotal stories about who they are as citizens. But because the Licensing Board is a technically complex entity, I'm going to use my report to be a little more technical tonight. I assure you that both of the appointees are wonderful and kind, so please do not let my absence of those details imply otherwise. So the first thing to cover is that the Licensing Board appointees are typically mayoral appointees. Because of the mayor's connection to a local business that sells alcohol, she rightly recused herself, making Council President Gomez the appointing authority. Further, Chapter 138, Section 4, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, lays out specific state-level criteria in order to be appointed. They may not be engaged in the manufacture or sale of alcoholic beverages, they must also be residents of East Hampton for two years and one day from the time of their appointment, and that the board must represent the two leading political parties in order to conduct its business. So currently, the Licensing Board has a registered Republican who meets this criteria. So in order for me to recruit to the Licensing Board, I'm required to, by law, to field only registered Democrats at this time. Both appointees before us tonight have attested that they are registered Democrats, with residency in East Hampton surpassing two years and one day. Should the council say yes to one appointee and then not another, that third person may be a Republican or a Democrat, but the Licensing Board, as it stands right now, cannot function without having a Democrat present. So before I continue, does anybody have any questions about that overview?
Anycons, do I have any questions?
Okay, thank you. So then next, each appointee must meet a series of ethical criteria to be appointed. This involves probing the personal lives of appointees to establish a set of facts. So I thank both of them, who are transparent and open to a level of public scrutiny that is not typically afforded to many other public servants, including those of us who sit on this council. So here are the facts that follow for each of the candidates. So our first appointee is Rebecca Bell. I know some of you know who she is for the public. She is the wife of Consulor Denham. To be clear, she has no connections to the manufacture or sale of alcohol in Massachusetts. There are no ethical conflicts in her ability to serve as a Licensing Commissioner for the city of East Hampton. And in the past, as city councillors and the mayor have done, whenever votes consider our family members, we must vote to abstain. I know that Consulor Denham is aware of that vote requirement tonight, so we'll do two separate motions for each of the appointees. And then, any burden falls on Consulor Denham to cast votes, Ms. Bell does not have any voting capabilities that could affect the city council, so she is, there are no ethical concerns for her. So she's 100% in the clear. And then our second appointee, Stephen De Zalnier, is also being appointed to the Licensing Board. He did speak with me about his relationship with Lauren Clark. For those who do not know, she is a partial owner of the Tip Top Wine Shop in East Hampton. So I also want to expressly thank Mr. De Zalnier for engaging in this process, which was far more intrusive. We had our city solicitor and the State Ethics Commission examine attested details, such as any shared real property, automobile ownership, checking accounts, credit card information, and so much more. Our solicitor and the Ethics Commission shared in the judgment that he may be appointed to the Licensing Board so long as he and Ms. Clark do not get married. Should they get married, that would automatically disqualify him, he'd have to resign from that seat. And that his relationship with her only arises to an appearance of conflict, not an actual conflict. He was advised and agreed to submit an appearance of conflict form with details about his relationship, which will be housed with the council clerk as long as the Licensing Board appointees remain the council president's appointees. Further, he was given instructions on when he must recuse himself from votes, and when he should exercise prudence on applications related to the retail sale of wine. So that information is going to be compiled. Barbara will have that on file, should anybody ever need to access it. So Ms. Bell and Mr. De Zalnier are granted free access to the State Ethics Commission, the same way that each of us are, and may rely on that at any time to identify if and when they ought to recuse themselves from this process. I know that this seems so absurdly complex, but this is a state law guideline, and we have to adhere to what the state says, so that was the process. The Appointment Committee voted unanimously 2-0 to approve their appointments. Are there any questions?
No, just one clarification for the public. Both have different expiration dates?
Yes.
And that is probably because?
Yep, so I-
They resign and they're taking their positions, right?
Yes, absolutely. So that was my next point, if there were no questions. Thank you, Council President. And it is to clarify that, that the, unlike other appointees before the city, which typically are three-year terms that expire on December 31st at the end of the year, because this is a state appointment, terms are six years in length, and the person gets appointed to the actual seat that they are sitting in, and each of those three seats expires every two years, so that there is not this type of turnover like we've recently experienced. And to confirm, the reappointment dates for those seats are tied to our state's fiscal calendar, so that would be the first Monday in June. Also, there were some errors in the actual dates of when they would, their seats would expire, so the motions that I'm about to make include the correct information. Okay?
That's good.
Am I good to proceed?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first, I move to appoint Stephen De Zalnier to the Licensing Board with a term expiration date of June 3rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second.
I have a motion and a second for the appointment of Stephen for the Licensing Board, expiration date, June 3rd, 2024. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And then next, I move to appoint Rebecca Bell to the Licensing Board with a term expiration date of June 2nd, 2026.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Rebecca Bell for the Licensing Board with the expiration date, June 1st, 2026. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention?
I abstain.
Motion passes with one abstentions.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to take the last few moments to emphasize how thankful I am to the service of the Licensing Board, that is Mr. Corella, who is already on the Licensing Board, to Mr. De Zalnier and Ms. Bell for their willingness to serve the community. This is often an overlooked board, but is central to the entire economy of East Hampton and all of our small business owners, who make our culture as vibrant and exciting as it is. Without their service, events that we love, like Food Truck Fridays and Cultural Chaos, would cease to exist. So from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for your service. Also, this work exists with the service to East Hampton from Lindsay Sekula. She has served the city of East Hampton for nearly six years. In many ways, she is the central nervous system of the mayor's administration, and she also serves as the clerk to the Licensing Board. Her institutional knowledge will guide our new appointees to a robust onboarding process, and she and I have worked tirelessly over the last few months to ensure that the city's economy continues without interruption this year. So please, if you see her, thank her for her service. The Appointment Committee has no new appointees before us. Our next meeting will be scheduled at a later time. Thus concludes.
Thank you. I just want to add, therefore, the two new appointees, be ready, because the Mayor's Office is gonna, Lindsay's gonna send something really soon to them, because they're gonna start working really soon.
Very soon.
Yes, we have a lot of stuff to do in our city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordnance, Consul Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, we still have before us the Electronic Message Center. As I mentioned before, we met with, we had a joint meeting with the Planning Board. Because of grants that the Planning Department has been working on, we did not receive the report that is from the Planning Committee. And so, I have been assured that we will receive that no later than next week, to be able to discuss at our next ordinance meeting, which is going to be March 28th at 6:00 PM in Conference Room B. And at that point, we will just discuss the issue. And other than that, thus concludes.
Thank you, Consul Denham. Property, Consul Sarret?
Nothing to report, but it looks like there may be some new business, and I will anxiously await to see if that is moved to committee, and we will set a, we'll find time to set a property meeting.
Thank you. Rules?
Concludes.
Rules and government relations, Consul Kozinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we have heard tonight, there was, I think folks spoke very clearly about their positions. At the Rules Committee meeting, there was about, I think it was reported, about one-third of the folks spoke in opposition to the language, not to the concept that there be peace in the Middle East and how to get there. That being said, with your absence at that meeting, and given that all the time I remember, any time, an issue similar to this, an issue of great importance and meaning for everybody, that we always had three members present at that time, especially if there was any tweaking. And many of the folks who came in opposition, had said that they weren't opposed to the general idea, but general, this certain pieces of it. We wanted to be sure that you had a chance to hear that testimony, so we have scheduled, actually bumped, the rank-choice voting, sorry, Tom. Tom introduced the rank-choice voting, so he's very interested in the subject, has been following it very carefully, but, which had been scheduled for March 27th, next Wednesday night, for the topic area of the ceasefire and the ceasefire alone, because we want to move this as rapidly as possible. We had scheduled the previous week for a meeting, but that didn't work out because one of the members was on vacation and was unavailable for that time. Being an important issue, we thought that we should have three members to discuss this and to hear everything. Well-attended, I think, and I think it was, I think tonight, we heard even more from folks about their thinking and their reasoning. And I just would like folks to thank everyone for participating on Wednesday, I mean, on Monday of this weekend, certainly being here today. That's pretty much the report from the Rules Committee, so we will be meeting- So we will be meeting at March 27th, Wednesday, at 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM. Just a few different changes in time, but 6:00 PM on Wednesday. And we hope at that time to be able to present a document. Thus concludes.
Thank you. New business, Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have some new business tonight. We have a request for immediate consideration, resolution in support of paint stewardship and recycling. I would like to move that that be sent to the Rules and Government Relations Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to move the resolution to the Rules Committee. Any further discussion?
Just...
It's roses and first, sir.
Yeah, but I saw you first, Counselor Sarret.
I'll defer to Counselor Peak, if that's okay.
Counselor Peak?
Is this something that we need to send to Rules?
I didn't see that that was asked to consideration for tonight. That's why we're gonna send it to the committee.
Oh.
I mean, if the council is okay voting for tonight, I'm okay, but I just, being clear, when we send it to the agenda, we didn't ask to, for voting tonight, but if the council wanted to vote tonight, I'm not, I'm not against it. Counselor?
I was gonna say the same thing. I don't really have any, it doesn't make a difference to me either way. I just, was listed under request for immediate consideration. That's what I was just confused about, and I, it's not urgent, so I don't have an issue.
I mean, if the council feels comfortable voting tonight, I'll do it tonight. Any is against it? Do you have it with you?
I can probably find it pretty quick.
Here, I don't know if you want, if he's gonna read it?
Do you have it?
I have it right here.
Read it, as a motion.
Okay, all right.
Do you have to read all the rules? Somebody made a motion?
He's gonna do it.
I'm gonna do it right now.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's okay.
So we want to withdraw the motion, to send it to committee.
Send it to committee.
Oh, sorry. You're right. We have to withdraw the motion.
I withdraw the motion.
I withdraw my second.
Thank you.
All right. So in the form of a motion, I'm going to do a reading of the resolution in support of paint stewardship legislation. Whereas landfill capacity in Massachusetts has rapidly declined and no new capacity is expected, and whereas the cost of hauling and disposal of waste materials have increased by over 30% in the last five years, and are expected to continue increasing at similar rates, and whereas paint stewardship, a paint stewardship law would create a convenient collection network to properly manage all architectural paint from business and residential sectors, and substantially decrease inappropriate discarding of paint, which is a toxic substance that can cause harmful environmental pollution, and whereas a paint stewardship law will divert paint from waste disposal to its best and highest use, whereby there will be a small but real decrease in the total waste going into landfills, and whereas paint stewardship laws have been demonstrated as an effective means of diverting paint from landfills in our neighboring states of Connecticut, Rhode Island, Maine, Vermont, and New York, and whereas a law supporting the discarding of latex and oil-based paints at participating retail stores and transfer stations has strong support from constituents, and whereas municipal waste management systems were established a century ago to manage wastes like ashes, food scraps, and horse manure, rather than the wide array of manufactured goods, including paint, which dominates today's municipal waste. And whereas the Massachusetts Municipal Association passed a resolution which supports statewide producer responsibility legislation in January 2019, now therefore be it resolved that the, East Hampton City Council urges the Massachusetts General Court and the leadership of both chambers to view the pending paint stewardship legislation favorably, and take whatever actions are necessary to pass the paint stewardship bills into law, including voting favorably out of any and all committees. A paint stewardship law will begin relieving municipalities and consumers of ever-rising solid waste management costs, significantly reduce a toxic waste going into landfills, and decreases greenhouse gases generated by the paint industry by up to 4%. Pending state, pending paint stewardship legislation in the 2023-2024 legislative session includes bills such as H823, an Act Relative to Paint Recycling, S542, an Act to Establish Safe Paint Stewardship, and S521, an Act Relative to Paint Recycling. That was in the form of a motion.
I have a motion and a seconds to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? Counselor Sarret?
Yeah, just a few comments and some to summarize what was just read. So I'm sure many of you have had to deal with disposing of paint, and both, certainly a residential and commercial settings. It's confusing, it's expensive, and it's, there's so many barriers to doing so, that oftentimes people just kind of give up and throw the paint where it shouldn't go. East Hampton, obviously, is in the midst of a climate action plan. We passed a climate crisis resolution, and we recently formed a committee specifically to tackle environmental and ecological sustainability. This would add approximately 75 cents fee to the gallon, to make it less expensive to dispose of paint and create collection sites and processing areas. As mentioned, this has already been done in 10 other states, including the District of Columbia. All of our neighboring states, except New Hampshire, have done this and saved approximately $300 million in terms of environmental disposal fees. So it makes sense, it's gonna keep everything cleaner, we're gonna keep paint out of our landfills and out of our waterways, so it's kind of a no-brainer.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. We also have a request for ordinance committee to review the municipal opt-in specialized stretch energy code. I would, in the form of a motion, send that to the ordinance committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to send this item to the ordinance committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
We also have a request for temporary moratorium on the use of sewage sludge and fertilizer in East Hampton. I move that we send that to the ordinance committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to, for the request of the temporary moratorium of the use of sewage sludge fertilizer in East Hampton. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes.
And our last one is a request for Verizon pole location on East Street. I move that we send that to property.
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a seconds to send this item to property committee. Any further discussion? Counselor Sarret?
Mr. President, with your permission, I want to just get ahead of ourselves and set the public hearing now, if that's okay? So I'd like to, I'll do it after the vote. I also just want to comment, in order to mitigate some of the issues we experienced at the last meeting, I'm gonna send...
Let's vote for this, and you make the motion, or you can include the public hearing. And what day?
No, I can, you want to do that?
Yeah, that one we can vote.
Okay, yeah, on the 20th, at 6:15 of...
20th?
I'm sorry.
April.
17th of April. Looking at the wrong calendar.
Okay, so I would amend, I would amend my motion to also set a public hearing on the 17th of April.
I amend my second.
All right. We have a motion and a seconds to move this item to the property committee, and to schedule a public hearing, April 17, these chambers, at 6:15. Any further discussion, Counselors Sarret?
Quick comment, in terms of, in regards to what we dealt with last time, I'm going to, as the Chair of Property, in order to try to mitigate what happened last time, just send a letter to the, to the utility to let them know the process and to wait.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. We take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Thank you. Everybody have a great evening.
You have things to sign.